Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Please stand and salute the flag.
Our flag's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Oh, three of them. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. Today is July twenty fifth or twenty third.
July twenty third.
Today is July twenty third, and this is our work session. A work session basically for the new school year. And I will begin. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follow. On January ten, twenty twenty four, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss an act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Loa. Roll call.
Ms. Corrello. Ms. Centron.
Present.
Ms. Adella Cruz. Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Caesada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Ulyss.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Present.
Comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
I guess I have to sign here, and then we'll get started. My first item, these are all agenda items. On page twenty nine in the finance report, item number eighteen, number one, in school number two, making a storage room into an office. I think it's tied in, so.
Page twenty nine? What page? What page?
In school number one, on page thirty five, item number thirty nine, number two, splitting classrooms. Okay? It sounds like we have more students than we can slightly have in our building. Does this mean that there's a bigger push to have more buildings? Or it might get to imagine the fact that we need more room and perhaps more administration or something to handle the influx of students?
Is this item number twenty one?
Which version of the agenda are you looking at?
Absolutely, because we don't have it.
I think he mentioned Finance Resolution eighteen and Finance Resolution thirty nine.
Page forty four.
They don't have personnel, so.
Yeah, they don't have personnel.
That's probably why it's different. It doesn't have personnel, so that's why it's different.
Oh, I see.
Finance number eighteen. I think you should keep the numbers the same. Just pull those, yeah. Like, just skip the numbers.
This is the vendors. She's talking about the vendors?
So it's item number one?
This is no room.
What was the question on Resolution eighteen?
Okay, get there with me while I get my glasses. Okay, it's in the finance report on page twenty nine. Item number eighteen. I believe it refers to making a storage room into an office in school number two. Then, on page thirty five, item number thirty nine, second item there, splitting classrooms in school number one. To me, this sounds like we need more school or more something. And, you know.
And then what's another?
Maybe I missed something. I don't know. But when we start splitting classrooms, this fit in with the state program of so many square feet per student or whatever that formula is used for the amount of students that we can put into a building.
One of the things I could tell you, though, is that last year, we did the demographic study. And based on the results of the demographic study, it shows that our school district or student population is not increasing at the rate we expected our population to increase. So we are looking at options to accommodate students. Not at this moment building a school because if the demographic study doesn't support the need, there is no reason for us to build a new school and incur over $200,000 in debt. But we continue to look at the influx of students, and we will have to revisit it again in another year to see if the demographic has changed, the study has changed. What do you think? Is that?
Okay, I mean, I understand what you said, Dr. Berghammer, and I appreciate it. But it's, you know. I still have a hard time. You know, if we're trying to accommodate more students, we want to avoid the cost of building a new building at whatever that is. It must mean that the rate of growth or the number of students coming into the school district are higher than what may have been pointed out in the demographic study from last year.
Yeah, but you cannot build a new building if all you have is, say, fifty or hundred more students, right? You could only build a new building if you have the student population that supports the growth. So based on where we are right now, we have to move offices around. We have to move students around because it's just a minute amount of growth that we are getting. But of course, as I said, when you do demographical studies, these studies are done maybe every three to five years. If we look at our population, and we know that we have our building could support sixty-five hundred students, okay? And then all of a sudden, we see that we have five hundred students. That's an obvious need to start looking at more space. But right now, where we are, and based on the study that was performed last year, I think that the superintendent and her staff are doing, making smart decisions as opposed to open up storage room to accommodate students as opposed to incurring additional expense. John Sarapilia, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, we are, you know, in the short term, these are addressing the issues that we have in regards to student population. You also have to understand that sometimes the student population in a particular school might not necessarily be increasing, but we still have a need for more space based on the makeup of the students in the school themselves. Students, some students require class sizes of only five to seven students. So there are times when you're seeing that the classes are being split. It's not that we're putting forty kids in a classroom. It might be that it is a regular-sized classroom that's being split for two small group instructions. I mean, that's typically what we are doing with the splitting of the rooms. For school one, we are seeing, you know, we do have certainly needs for additional spaces there. Other schools aren't seeing those needs, per se. Some of the work that we're looking at doing at school number two is better utilizing the space that we have there. We have, you know, we have added things like coaches and whatnot that we need to have them a space or kind of, I want to say wayward, but they don't necessarily have a permanent space to kind of start from, which is what we're looking at doing for school number two. But that being said, you know, we are also looking at the possibilities of what we can do long term. In fact, one of the resolutions on the agenda, which I will speak to, is the Long Range Facility Plan, which needs to be updated once every five years. We'll be looking to contract with our architect to give us an idea of the next five years, what we would need to do, which we'll be looking at the demographic study as well as the current spaces that we have in the buildings. And there might be recommendations for, you know, either additions or, you know, might be a new building. Again, I don't want to speak to it or put words in the board's mouth of what we will be doing. But in the short term, you know, if there is a need for it, you know, we wouldn't be able to add on to the building right now and have it be up for September. So that's, you know, it's sort of a short-term solution. This is certainly not the long-term solution. You know, we don't like splitting classrooms, but sometimes we're kind of required to.
Okay, along with all of this, as we do provide more space for students that needed and staff to provide the teaching, at what cost are we taking away other uses of rooms, such as libraries, that kids may use to make this extra space available?
Well, I don't think, I mean, none of this is touching libraries. Like I said, this was for school two. It's converting a storage room. I know for school one, we are looking, I mean, it's unfortunate, but this is what kind of happens. We do try to utilize the space as best we can, as well as any area that we can use for educational space. We're going to look to do that.
Okay, so at some point, are we heading towards all schools having libraries?
I couldn't speak to, do you guys know?
I didn't hear the question.
About libraries at the school?
At some point, will all schools have libraries? Are we heading to a scenario where they will and won't have libraries?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, no, at your convenience, Ms. Lewis. Thank you.
Well, we should, when it comes to libraries and stuff like that, we also have an amazing public library and that we could utilize. We could do some shared services with our public library as well during the day. So there's a lot of things we could do. I think these are really interesting questions you're bringing up. But I think right now, we way above the three minutes. So if you have any other questions that you'd like to ask, but I think we have met the amount of time for comments. Right now, but. Very good question. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next agenda item, Education Committee Report.
On Thursday evening, thank you, Dr. Berghammer. On Thursday evening, Superintendent Perkins will share out some updates regarding all of our summer programming that's taking place throughout the school district, as well as provide information regarding an upcoming job fair that we're planning, which is pending board approval for Thursday evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move to our next agenda item, Education Report.
The Education Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendents, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through eight, on pages four through nine, include enroll, are all for special education services. So this includes enrollments, terminations, payment for related services, as well as partnering with the Commission for the Blind to provide services for our students who are visually impaired in district. Agenda item number nine, on page nine and ten, is our table of amendments for past Board of Education reports. And agenda item number ten, on page ten, is seeking to approve district field trips. Copies are in the hands of board members. Agenda item number eleven, on page ten through twelve, is seeking to approve our use of facilities and school activities throughout the district. This includes the tentative job fair, as I referenced, and just various activities that will be taking place in the fall, such as fall photos, the high school freshman orientation, senior portraits, and our homecoming game in the fall. Agenda item number twelve, on pages twelve through fifteen, is our table of professional development for staff that will be taking place throughout the school year. Agenda item number thirteen, on page fifteen, is seeking to approve the Danielson Leadership Training. Danielson is the tool that is used to evaluate teachers. The organization will be coming in to train all of our administrators during our administrative retreat. Agenda item number fourteen is seeking to approve a tuition contract with Somerset Public School District for a student. Agenda item number fourteen is seeking to approve another tuition contract for a displaced student that we are fiscally responsible for. Agenda item number sixteen, on page sixteen, is seeking to approve our winter and spring concert dates. Agenda item number seventeen, on page seventeen, is seeking to approve our Title I Saturday Academy. Agenda item number eighteen is seeking to approve two courses for students to fulfill graduation requirements. This is for our Academy of Excellence students. They will be taking the place, the courses through EduCer, which is an online remote platform. Agenda items number nineteen and twenty is for central registration to conduct their pre-K three and pre-K four roundup. So that's their registration for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which will start in January. Agenda items number twenty-one and twenty-two are for writing and revisions of ESL curriculum as well as world languages curriculum. Agenda item number twenty-three, on page nineteen, is seeking to approve the submission of the IDEA application. The IDEA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. This is for our Special Education Department, and it outlines what we receive from the state. Agenda item number twenty-four, on pages twenty through twenty-two, is seeking to approve our district-wide instructional leadership team. The instructional leadership team, each school has a team, and what they do is they conduct data analysis throughout the school year. They provide support to teachers as it pertains to data analysis. They identify areas of growth, opportunities for growth throughout the school year. Agenda item number twenty-five, on page twenty-two, is seeking to approve our intern, student interns. So these are our student teachers that come from these identified universities that we partner with. Agenda item number twenty-six, on page twenty-three. This is for our skip committee members. These are school improvement panels, and what they do is they provide support to teachers and certificated staff throughout the district regarding SGOs. SGOs are student growth objectives. And additional support. Agenda item number twenty-seven, on page twenty-five, is seeking to approve our back-to-school night dates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Agenda item number twenty-eight, on page twenty-five, is seeking to approve to reinstate the World Language Student Exchange Programs. So the ML department is looking to start exploring reinstating the partnerships with countries such as China, Italy, Spain, and France. We had this program in place years ago, and it was very successful, but it was halted due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So the ML department is looking to explore reinstating it. Item number twenty-five is seeking to approve a undergraduate student from Kane University to complete their clinical experience under the athletic trainer. Item number thirty, on page twenty-five, is seeking to approve a high school biology resource. Item number thirty-one, on page twenty-six, is seeking to approve home instruction students for home instruction services, I'm sorry, for students who are admitted to Trinitas Regional Medical Center. Items number thirty-two and thirty-three are providing transition services for special education students at the high school. Agenda item number thirty-four is seeking to approve the district mentoring plan. This is for our new teachers. They're all paired with a mentor that they receive additional support so that that increases their likelihood of success throughout the school year. Agenda item number thirty-five is seeking to approve the superintendent's determination and action on HIV reports. And that concludes the education report.
Any questions?
Yes. For agenda item number twenty-four, on page twenty-two, can we add another vice principal to the instructional leadership team at the high school?
Of course.
Okay. And then for agenda item number twenty-seven, on page twenty-five, what happens if we have a parent that has a child at the high school and then also at school number one? Do they have to determine which school that they're going to prioritize? Is there a way for us to reschedule that or put them on a different day?
So the challenge is, it may be difficult to meet the needs of the entire district. And so we do our best to spread out the back-to-school night dates. And so we'll try to pair, which dates were you referring to specifically?
The only conflict I have is school number one in the high school because all the other schools.
Are on individual dates?
Yeah, the other schools are elementary schools. So I highly doubt that a parent would have a child at school five and then a child at school number six because it's, you go to school based off where you're zone. But school number one, I could see somebody having a child at school number one in the high school. The middle schools, again, like, I don't think somebody would be at them, have two children at the opposite middle schools.
We can certainly look at that. We try to get them in as early as possible and avoid Mondays and Fridays. So we typically aim for Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. But yes, we can definitely look at adjusting.
All right, thank you. That was the only thing I had.
Anyone else? I have, I have been looking at your leadership, stuff with your teachers and your groups. And I find to be, I think it's not equitable. When I say, I could be wrong, okay? Guys, hear me out. I find that if you look and start in from page twenty-four, you have all the schools where you have this instructional leadership team. And also, when you go a little lower, you get the, is it SIP or whatever? Yes, a skip. But one of the things I find here, part of our learning is we don't have no counselors that are part of our leadership team. We are not addressing mental health. We are not addressing substance abuse. This is not included in your leadership team or in your lineup. I could be wrong, but also, I do not know if we also addressing our multilingual community properly. Again, I could be wrong. I'm just, I don't know some of the names. I can't know if I read a name if it's what their, what their heritage or whatever. But if you do, if you're dealing with a leadership team for the whole year, it should be equitable. We should be addressing, we should have guidance counselors. We should have mental health people in training included. We should also have substance abuse in it. We should have all those stuff. What I would like to see, and I'm just one board member, forgive me if other board members support me, I would like to see a calendar for what type of activities, when I say activities, testing for students who may have mental health issues. Do we have random drug testing in our high schools? All these different stuff. I think that, I noticed it last year, and I also noticed this year, that we are not addressing, we are not including this type of, of, help me, help me. Danny, you know, you know the word. Because, but we are not, we are not equitable in our calendar of, 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 of needs for our student population. What do you think?
I want to make sure I understand, that I'm following you.
You look at this. It have teachers, it have coaches. Where is school counselors? Where is the SAGs? Where is the mental health people? We have to develop or help ours. We have to be equitable. All right? Across the board.
I would like a report, if possible, like you're saying, calendar, like, let's say how we have the HIP reports, but have like maybe a calendar of mental health issues that have been addressed and have their solutions. We are not informed of what's going on as far as with mental health. And I do, I would second that as far as the counselors.
Another thing.
I do agree with you with that because mental health is not, doesn't seem like a priority in the schools. I will invite.
So I can talk a little bit to that. So the skip team, for example, the state has established what they start to specifically do, and that is to ensure, oversee, and support the implementation of the district's evaluation, professional development, and mentoring policies at the school level. And then when you talk about the instructional leadership teams, their focus is on the data, the instructional practices, strategies, how to drive that for student achievement. So that is extremely important, you know, the counselors and all that. But with these two teams, that's not necessarily their goal from the state level necessarily with the instructional strategies.
Then we have to create something for them. We have to create something for mental health, for drug testing, for substance abuse. We need to create a calendar of how we track, how we monitor, how we train teachers for all, in all these different areas.
First and foremost, that's great, but our teachers, that's too much pressure for them. Me and Ms. Annabelle got together, and she's looking into the mental health. We need to train someone outside, not the teachers, because it's too much for them. If we get someone here who knows how to deal with mental health, that would be much better. I think that would be A-plus because they are equipped to it. You know what I'm saying? And I'm not saying the teachers is not well-rounded. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is, let's get someone who knows what they're doing pertaining to mental health when it comes from the children on up. Because we need to do that, as well as getting them someone who they can talk to, as well as who they can relate to them. You know, I think we need to do that as well.
Thank you. So a few additional things. Yes, Ms. Pino had shared some information with me that I am exploring for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In addition to that, in the finance report, you'll see that we're seeking approval to continue with Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare Services that we've partnered with, and they provide three professional licensed clinical-level counselors and social workers that provide tier-three-level support for our students who are struggling. Yes, mental health is absolutely on the rise throughout the nation. Each of our schools, all of our elementary schools are staffed with a school social worker. Our middle schools are staffed with two school social workers, two school counselors. And our high school is actually staffed with seven counselors and four school social workers. And we've increased that based on the need. We're continuing with our parent universities. So we continue to partner with Mr. Devaney, excuse me, the supervisor of student services. So we'll be continuing with our parent universities for the upcoming school year because, again, parents also play a piece in supporting the mental health needs of students. We want to be partners with them because in order to effectively meet the needs of our students, we need, we need the parents to partner with us. So we're going to, our counselors and social workers do push into classrooms and provide lessons. So yes, if you're looking for some more concrete data or a calendar of services and support that we provide, we can absolutely get that to you.
If it seems too much for a teacher, it seems so overwhelmed. At least if maybe the teacher could address it to a counselor, and a counselor could reach out to a parent, that would be great.
That's the process, exactly. Yes.
Because it's all about communication. If the parent doesn't know what's going on in the hours of the school hours, then the mental health, as far as, there's no, there's a gap there. And that's where unfortunately, a student could, something could happen to a student. So I think hiring more counselors or, like you said, a calendar, that would be great, just to know what's going on, what's the progress with this student. We don't need the names, but at least a student number, what's going on with.
We can get you some information.
Just a follow-up. Thank you.
Another thing I would like. In our last school year, we had an opportunity impromptu to have a meeting with our principal in work session. And there was so much stuff that we were not aware of that was going on. I would like you, we have several board members who even have children in the high school. I would like to know if we could have the principal of the high school, which is our flagship school or largest school in the district, if we could have the principal come before the board at least once every three months or once every four months to update the board with everything that's going on in his high school. What are your thoughts on that, if any board member have any?
I have my full support with that.
Yeah, I agree. Hundred and ten percent. I agree as well.
This week, be updating what's going on.
It could be every quarter. What do you, what do you think, ma'am?
Every quarter. Quarter. Every quarter should be fine.
I think we should be receiving updates from the principal.
Yes, so I would like to see the principal come to our board meeting. We have, and we would like that on our calendar as well, as to which, you know, we break it down, and we need to know what is coming, and then we would have an idea. My suggestion is, is that he should prepare a SWOT analysis, which identifies the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats. Every school has those areas, areas we good at, areas we need to develop, and of course, weaknesses. So I think that he should create a SWOT, and in that SWOT, he goes over. So I think that he should create a SWOT and in that SWOT, he goes over, all right, let's talk about if if security is one of our weaknesses, what are the weaknesses and what we doing to handle it? If scholarship is one of our strengths, what are we planning to improve it? Because if you just go and you don't have a organized format as to what we are going to the information we are going to get, it's he's going to come there, speak a lot of stuff, but we would not be able to see the its value.
Okay.
Very good, Dr. B.
You want to continue? You take.
I have questions for the education report. Item number nine, line items five and six, I'm just wondering the cost difference, sixty three thousand, seven hundred ninety one dollars instead of thirty seven thousand, six hundred ninety one dollars. And then the one below that as well. I'm sorry, Malaysia. What page? This is page nine on the education report.
The amendments, right? Number nine. Yes, I can get you that information for Thursday, that specific information.
Okay, and then for on page twelve, item number two, there's a different cost for the same event for item number twelve, line item eleven. I'm just wondering why there's a cost difference for the same event?
Item number twelve, number two and number eleven. Number two, the National Student Safety and Security Conference?
Yes, and then number eleven, it's the same conference, it's just a different cost.
Number eleven, I think is a different conference, the NJ P S A.
Is that different?
Yes.
National Student Safety and Security, National Student Safety and Security, looks like it's the same.
Mine is different on mine. I'm looking at the wrong one.
That is correct.
Number twelve, number two, number twelve, number eleven.
It's different prices.
I'm just wondering what's the cost difference.
This one here, two here, this is on page twelve, is nine fifty. What's the next page?
Fourteen.
Page fourteen.
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
Oh, I see the issue. There's two number elevens, so we'll have to fix that. There's two number elevens because I was looking at number eleven on page thirteen.
Me too.
There's two number elevens. Okay, so that's a typo.
Same date, different amounts.
Yes.
And the next one you have? You have another?
Yeah, I have another question. Or maybe if it's a comment.
I can respond to that. I can respond to that first question. There's a difference in the cost because one staff member stayed at the conference location and the other staff member drove back and forth and commuted.
Okay, all right. Number eighteen, let's just make sure we correct the font for consistency. Number eighteen.
Page?
On page seventeen.
Yes, I flagged that. Thank you.
And then for number twenty one on page nineteen, when will the teachers be briefed? Is it the week that they return?
When will the teachers?
Be briefed on the curriculum update? Is this once they return and at the end of August? How will this?
I believe that they'll start their curriculum writing come September, but I can confirm and get that for you on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Armstead, you made a comment regarding number twenty four. I didn't hear the question. You just mentioned vice principal, but I didn't hear what the question was.
Add you wanted to add a vice principal from the high.
Yeah, and I and I left out something too. I'm just looking for it too because she just brought it back up. Um, hold on. I also wanted to add a vice principal to the to item number twenty five, no, twenty six for the high school too. Just because again, it's a larger school, you know. So we could have the extra.
Sure.
Thank you. That concludes my questions. Anyone else?
Anyone else? I just want one last question added. On I page number seventeen, item number seventeen, I think this board would like a report as to what goes on in Saturday school.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
As in the Saturday detention because that's different.
Yeah, but yeah, but we want to know what goes on in Saturday school, that detention or whatever. We have students coming to school on Saturday and, you know, and the question is, do we need Saturday school or should it be in the afternoon? Do we need it Saturday because we have it's just all these expenses we doing for different programs that we possibly may be able to move around.
What about night school?
Night school is continuing. Yes.
No, no, but what's going on with night school?
Oh, okay, yes, we can provide you an update.
All right, these all these stuff is very good for the school year so we get a clear idea, understanding of what is actually going on in our school district.
Number seventeen is for the Title One Saturday Academy. So that provides additional academic services to Title One students. But yes, we can get you a report for Saturday detention.
Is this homework?
Tutoring.
Tutoring.
Is tutoring and homework will help? And is it in school or is it virtual?
Remediation in in person.
In school, but the Saturday detention is for the secondary schools, middle school and high school. We can get you an update.
But if we do this training virtual, won't be able to reach more students, especially if it's help?
This is different than the Saturday detention. This is like a different program.
I know, but I'm just saying with this program here, if we do it virtual on Saturday at home.
I do think tutoring is more effective in person. That's just my personal thing. I don't I don't learn well online. I was a A student, but I had to be in person. If you would have put me hybrid, I would have failed.
Yeah, I think it's much better in person because if you virtual, we're not doing our work.
Do you want virtual to be available just in case? But let's say the student is not available to be there can is there a link that could be sent?
I'm not a huge fan of that.
I I I learn better online, that's why. But there's different students. They're better in person, there's some that are better online, so.
Yeah, everybody learns differently. We understand that.
You could have that available?
We want effectiveness. We want them to be there.
But if they can't make it, at least have it available.
Yes, if they can't make it.
Yeah, I because I just think sometimes when you open up the opportunity for them to not attend, they will they will find a way to not attend. I do think we should we should try to encourage them to go in person. Because I do get I do understand your point. I just I just think that sometimes when we tell the kids, there's a virtual option, they go, there's a virtual option, we don't have to come. And I think at in a high school level or when they're younger, we have the maturity as adults to understand if we're doing something virtual, we still have to take it seriously. But I think sometimes when you're a little bit younger, there's not a there's not a focus on what you're learning online. I do think like at the college level, there is a little bit more, but their attention span is there. But I think sometimes their attention span is not there when they're not in person. It's not.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the finance report.
Good evening. Before I begin, I just want to welcome Kayla and Dave to, you know, Kayla to the over there. Dave to the dais. On Thursday, the finance committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the business administrator, will be presenting the following motions to the Linden Board of Education. Our first five are our monthly resolutions, approving the board secretary and treasurer's report, paying salaries, paying our bills, approving transfers, as well as the student activities reports. Resolution six, seven and eight are regards to accepting donations, seven hundred dollars from the Black Bull Giving Fund, two hundred and fifty dollars from the Arthur E. Rossell Arthur E. Rossell for the Athletic Hall of Fame, and one thousand dollars from Vanguard Charitable for the Otto T. Salazar Memorial Scholarship. Resolution number nine is approval for Heartland School Solutions. This is for our online food service applications that we utilize through our mosaic. Resolution ten is approving the addendum with the City of Linden for special law enforcement officers for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Resolution eleven is our O M B mileage reimbursement rate, which is forty seven cents. It's a little bit different than the I R S rate. Resolution twelve is to authorize my office to submit to the county, the board secretary and treasurer's report as of June thirty, two thousand twenty four. This is a requirement that the county is to review those reports every year. Resolution thirteen is we had spoken about previously in regards to pricing for our food service program, the featured menu items at the high school for lunch programs. It would be a enhanced meal for our for our faculty as well as our students. And it would be fifty cents more. Obviously, the free and reduced students would not be required to pay for it. Resolution fourteen is for substitute staffing services for our healthcare. This is agreeing to an agreement with Soliant for the twenty four, twenty five school year. This doesn't require us to use them, but that would just be another resource if we have a need for staffing or rather subservices for our healthcare department. Resolution fifteen is to approve a contract with Franz Law Group to represent the Linden Board of Education in a class action lawsuit against the social media companies. I realize there might be some questions in regards to this. In executive session, we can actually call Franz Law Group. They had actually reached out to us in regards to a class action suit so they can give us a little bit more background in regards to it. But figured it didn't hurt to join the lawsuit and there might be some money that we can receive out of it. Resolution sixteen is extending with our current security, just to provide summer security for our summer programs, our E S Y, our, you know, summer schooling, to ensure that we have security at the high school for the summer program. Resolution seventeen is approving a proposal from H two M, the district's architect of record, for alterations and renovations for the district's administrative offices. Resolution eighteen is looking to approve some of the work that we had presented as part of our twenty four, twenty five school budget presentation. This is for work that we're looking at doing. The work at school number six and the middle schools is doing the ceiling tiles and lights in the new science or rather in the science rooms that we're looking to renovate. School number two, we had at the presentations, we had spoke about converting a storage room into office space in the basement area. And school number five, we're looking at removing and disposing existing V C T tile, installing new V C T tile in several rooms throughout the school. Resolution nineteen is for mass notifications through mobile communications and app integration. We're looking at doing this while we're also looking at installing a new website, but we would need to have the applications because whatever website we did choose to go with, it wouldn't be up and running by September. Resolution number twenty is looking to add security to our welcome center, which is located at the P D R C. This is installing cameras, security measures throughout that new space, which had previously just been a training area. And now that we're going to have staff in there, we wanted to make sure that they were safe and secure. Resolution twenty one, as part of the renovations of the TV studio, we were looking at doing there's two offices that are connected to the TV studio. We were looking at renovating them to purchase new classroom or not classroom, but rather office furniture for those two areas. Resolution twenty two, this is a professional development for executive coaching for our executive team. We would be looking to charge it to Title Two. And, you know, we could speak a little bit more about that if you have any questions. Resolution twenty three is a visitor management system for installation at the administrative building and the professional development resource center at P D R C. We currently have this system at all of our high school, all of our schools. We will just be looking to extend it into those two areas. Resolution twenty four is approving the actually renewing to participate with the co-op pricing with Aces. This is for our energy purchases. This is when we buy our electric and gas, we're buying it through the co-op. So this is just extending it for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Resolution twenty five is approving the insurance package, the renewal that our insurance agent was able to secure for us for the twenty four, twenty five school year. This is not for our health insurance. This is for work, things like workers comp, cybersecurity, property, casualty, things like that. Resolution twenty six is purchasing locks, student locks for the twenty four, twenty five school year. We reached out to the high school and the middle schools in regards to their needs for twenty four, twenty five. McManus actually told us that they didn't need any locks to be purchased and Seoul and middle school and Seoul and the high school had sent us those proposals. Resolution twenty seven, this is in regards to going out for competitive contracting for security services for the two thousand, twenty four, twenty five school year. Resolution twenty eight, this sort of ties in with our insurance group. We realized we never had actually officially done a resolution to continue with the N J School Insurance Group for the upcoming school year. So we're looking at doing that resolution. It's a rather lengthy one, goes over the next page and a half. Go to page forty eight. This is for shop class supplies for the twenty four, twenty five school year. We revised it down. The shop class will be offered at the A O E and the middle school. We initially had also looked to purchase supplies for the high school, but based on the numbers that we were seeing for those classes, there was no that shop class won't be run, I don't believe, so we aren't going to be obviously buying the supplies for it. Resolution thirty, as Annabelle spoke about, is our school-based mental health care services. We had done an R F P and this was determined by the team as the best lowest responsible R F P for the school district. Resolution thirty one is approving a non-resident child of a staff member to be enrolled in our district for twenty four, twenty five at the high school. Per the contract, we do charge twenty percent of the high school tuition rate as established through our budget process. Resolution thirty two, we've switched over to Strauss Esme to have a more easy searchable policy book. There is an online option that we're looking for the board to approve. There's a setup fee of one thousand, nine hundred ninety five dollars. There is a annual fee of one thousand, seven hundred forty five dollars. And then for public access, it's four hundred and ninety five dollars for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Resolution thirty three is approving the disposal of surplus equipment. Resolution thirty four, these are based on the recommendations of our new director of technology, looking at Apogee as well as J A Apogee for our website development and migration, as well as J A M F, which is one-to-one management. J A M F is management suite that allows us to remotely administer, manager and protect all of our all of our Apple devices, including our iPads and MacBooks. Resolution thirty five is for window repairs for screens at McManus and Seoul Middle School. We would be looking to do that through the Ed Data Co-op bid with Window Repair Systems of Westminster, South Carolina. Resolution thirty six is approving a contract with Stop It, which is anonymous reporting system that our students can use to report everything from bullying to violence to mental health issues. It is a no cost to the district and Annabelle could speak about it a little bit more if the board has any questions on it. Resolution thirty seven is automated building controls, which provides H V A C services. We're looking at a contract of six thousand, nine hundred and sixty five dollars for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Resolution thirty eight is looking to do installation of carpet flooring at the Seoul Middle School Faculty Lounge, as well as the offices in the TV studio at the Linden Academy of Science through Gillespie Group through a co-op. Resolution thirty nine, as I spoke about previously, is a proposal from H two M, our architect of record, for three items, general consulting, potential classroom alterations and renovations for school one, for creating more educational space through both the renovation of classrooms as well as splitting classrooms, and the long-range facility major update. The state of New Jersey, every five years requires school districts to have a long-range facility plan, which basically speaks to all potential facility upgrades that the district would like to do over the next five years. It's a plan that we're not required to do any of those that work, but it's sort of a planning document that the school district and the public can kind of go back to to look at. and the public can kind of go back to, to look at, what is it that the school district is looking to, you know, whether it's renovations or additions. It takes into account things like I spoke about before, the demographic study, the current makeup of the building, as well as the facilities themselves, and speaks to, you know, what upgrades might be needed, or what additions could potentially be needed. Resolution number forty is looking to join a joint agreement with N J Stride. I want to thank our new H R director for bringing this to our attention. This would be a path for the school district, you know, really joining with other participating boards of education, to look to add highly qualified educators who can add diversity to their respective Something came on late that I will probably be looking to put on at, on Thursday, which is a, an agreement with Cintron Hygiene. This is for feminine products. That's something that is now required, that we provide to our middle and high school students. So we're looking at a, a program that they would be coming in basically every two weeks to kind of, you know, install the dispensers and restock them. That's it in regards to the resolutions. Just to kind of give everyone an update in regards to a whole host of construction projects that we have going on, and you'll see, we have a lot going on right now. So our roof projects, the architects estimating that it should be completed within two weeks, obviously dependent on the weather. As you recall, the roofs are being worked out at school one, at our last building, McManus and Soul. The TV studio, the installation is ongoing. We're looking at basically working on that for the month of August, so that it could be up and running for the beginning of the school year. We then, that, that company will then be turning their attention to doing the work that we had contracted them for, for our auditoriums at the middle schools, as well as the high school. The playgrounds, the, they finished the rubber surfacing at Soul. They're going to be looking at doing school nine, starting between August first and August fifth. School four, the week of August fifth, as well as starting school number two, the week of August fifth, and then looking to do the school five courtyard, the week of August twelfth. Obviously, we have additional schools that are, are going to be done. That equipment, the P O's have been in, and those equipment has been ordered, but these were the ones that we were sort of waiting on from the prior school year. Bathrooms, we are in the process of putting together the bid for the bathrooms, for all the work that we're going to be looking to get done at, you know, various schools throughout the district, you know, school two, school five, school six, school nine, McManus, as well as the high school. That's going to be a bid. We've actually utilized our time and material vendor to do the school four bathrooms, which were bathrooms for the kindergartens inside the classrooms. We're also getting a quote to do, based on the recommendation of the board, to do, getting a quote from our time and material vendor to do the McManus bathrooms in the locker rooms. So we're, we're working on that. The H V A C, that work is ongoing. Obviously, we're looking to get that done prior to the start of the school year. We have the unit vents on site for school eight. Duck work is being worked on at school nine, as well as possible rigging for the rooftop units into the curb units. Piping is being worked on at school ten, as well as the layout of the units themselves. The marquees, the purchase order has gone in. We're waiting on an update in regards to when the two new marquees that we purchased will be installed. We did reach out, per the recommendation of the board, for a redo or revamping of the marquee at the high school. We are working on the science rooms. As you can see, we have the P O, or we're looking for approval on the flooring and ceiling tile work, and we're getting, we do have a estimate of delivery for at least school six of the science furniture towards the end of August, and we're waiting on the additional delivery dates for the other buildings. The electric, which was the upgrade that we're going to need to do so that we can start redoing H V A C upgrades, we are actually, they should have a draft report to us this week, as well as, you know, a final cost estimate based on their review of the work, and then we'll be looking to put together a bid on that. I just want to thank my team, my maintenance team, Rowley and Jay, they've been really on top of all, and like I said, we're doing a lot of work, and I'm sure I'm missing a lot of the stuff that we're doing there. And finally, just wanted to mention that we are going to have a need for executive session to discuss a couple of items, which will include a personnel item, as well as I spoke about the attorney issue, as well as cybersecurity contracts. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, concerned?
I had a quick question, well, two, but one, I think I'm going to ask in close. On page forty-four, item number nineteen, so we're paying twenty thousand dollars for us to do mass notifications.
Yes.
And then on page number forty-nine, item twenty-five, we're also hiring Apogee, who I know they're doing web services, but they also offer mass notifications, right? And then the city, I, I think, and then we also are adding a webmaster, which we can talk again in close. And then I know the city also has a contract with Nixle, and they offer a comp service, they offer complimentary, they have a complimentary license that also will do the mass text messaging, so I'm just wondering if that extra twenty thousand dollars is needed for us to spend for that service?
I think, well, our concern was having, I, I think to even get over to Nixle, I don't know if we would be able to get it in time for September, and the concern that we had was going into the school year, not being able to do any sort of the mass notifications. We did reach out to final site to see if there was any way we can get a partial plan in place. They weren't willing to necessarily do that. You know, it's unfortunate, it's, you know, we're going to kind of be running things concurrently because of, like I said, because we have a concern in regards to the notifications and being down with it.
But didn't Apogee pitch themselves on also being able to do that service?
No, they, they, Apogee can do the service, it just wouldn't be up and running for September. Like, like I said, our concern is that, you know, regardless, you know, if the board agrees to it or not with Apogee, if we were going to go to a new website, it's going to take a couple of months before we're able to set that up. You know, I know that they're, they're talking about maybe a month or two, but I'm, I've seen it like three or four months, and we didn't want to have it where we didn't have any notifications going out during that timeframe, because, you know, whatever new website we would go with does have that notification capability. We would just need to have something in place.
Temporarily.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's, like I said, unfortunately, it's going to be temporary, but they're going to be charging us for the full year.
So we wouldn't incur that for next year?
Yeah, that wouldn't be something that would be going forward, but like I said, the, the, the other option would be that we would have to try to rush to get whatever website we went with up and running and not have any notifications going out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
John, I'm sorry, following what you're saying, so you say temporarily, how many months would that be for the twenty thousand?
Well, once we, it's going to really depend on, on, on the migration to the new, to the new website. So that, you know, once the board approves this, you know, if the board approves going with Apogee, it would then have a meeting with them in regards to how long it would take for them to set up. So like I said, I'm, conservatively, I would think that we wouldn't be, you know, going over to any sort of new website before December, January. So it would at least be half the year.
Any other questions?
I have two questions. Honey, you have any?
Oh, go ahead, I'll, I'll go.
I just wanted to ask about, on page fifty, item thirty-six.
Yeah.
Approve the contract. Okay, who is going to be taking the kids' phone calls? You know what I'm saying? Who? Training people, you know what I'm saying? People who are well-equipped to get these answers and don't be very anonymous. Who will be talking to these children?
I can respond to that. So Stop It is an anonymous reporting, safety and wellness app. So students, parents, community members will have an opportunity to anonymously report any concerns from mental health, to school violence, to safety, to eating disorders. So to respond to your question specifically, they actually provide a twenty-four-seven monitoring service, that they operate with licensed professional counselors, and then they will contact the district after hours. So if something happens on a Saturday, they will notify, and we, as a team, will identify who those point staff members will be here in district. They will contact us, notify us of the report that they received, and if it's something that, they filter through it to determine the legitimacy of it, the seriousness of it, and if needed, they will also contact Linden Police Department as well. So part of the transition services, we will have to provide them with contact information for L P D, who the chief of police is, as well as who the team members here in district will be, that they are to contact after hours.
So from the district, from the teachers, this will be involved in this as well?
No, that will probably be an administrator and probably a, and a member of executive leadership who will be getting those calls after hours. No, that wouldn't be handled by a teacher.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Just a question, number thirty-eight, as far as like prioritizing renovations, the New Jersey State Co-op, so that's not coming out of the budget, right, John? The flooring?
No, it's, it would be coming out of the budget. Thirty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, the, the carpet flooring?
Yeah, the carpet flooring would be. It's, it would be charged to our capital expense. We did put money within the budget for flooring upgrades.
I don't see as a priority. That's why I'm questioning it. As a, as a co-op, I thought that we were, it wasn't coming out of the budget. That was my question.
Oh, no, co-op means it, basically that the, the co-op itself did the bidding for us. They went out and they secured pricing for this sort of work. And, I mean, we still do have to pay for it, but like I said, it's, it's, it's that we don't have to necessarily go out for bidding on it.
And that's a priority? The flooring?
I'm having a hard time with that, sorry.
Um.
Is it a priority?
Again, I don't, it's, it's, I mean, it's not necessarily a priority if you, if the board wanted it to be removed. I think what we were looking, especially in regards to the studios, it was that we were just trying to basically renovate the whole area. You know, the faculty lounge, this was just something that we were looking at doing, to kind of improve that area, but again, it's up to the board.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. One question is page forty-five, item twenty-seven. I see that we are going out for competitive bids for a new security company. Is that correct?
Competitive contracting, it's a little bit different, but it's, it is, we're going out for it to receive pricing. The main difference is with bids, you have to go with the lowest pricing. This allows us to factor in other items just besides the pricing.
My question is, is, did we get a final report from our, or would we be getting a final report from our security that we could look at? So if we do have to hire a new company, we know what we have to do differently in order that a new company is more effective?
They are, they've been currently doing a security assessment. We did contract with that. I mean, I don't want to speak about the, the other security company out here in public, so, you know, we certainly could talk about that in private, but I, I do know that there had been some, and again, this was, I thought there was some want from the board to necessarily go out for competitive contracting, or rather, go out for bids in regards to this.
Don't you think, guys, we need a, a, a report to see? Because we are from the inside looking out, they are from the outside looking in. They could tell us a lot more about what we can do differently. You know, we had a lot of problems that I think there is a need.
It is a need, but we can discuss it inside.
Yes, but we need that report. Yes, we need that report. The next question I, I want to ask is regarding item, page fifty, item, is it page fifty? No, no, that's not here. Page, oh, is it? Regarding the, we paying four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, page forty-eight, item thirty. Of course, again, we do not know what go on in, in the school system. We just have to assume. But we paying almost half a million dollars for this mental health company. Are we going to get, again, once again, a calendar of how this money going to be used? Where is it going to be used? What is this money going to be used for?
I can speak to that a little bit. So this is for Rutgers University Behavioral Health. They provide three licensed clinical level clinicians who work at Soul, McManus, and the high school. And so what they do is they provide clinical level services every day, Monday through Friday, throughout the entire day, to students, I'd say tier two, tier three students who are at a greater level of need. And so they pull students out, they provide counseling services in small groups, individual counseling sessions. In addition to that, they provide parent support as well. Another thing that they provide is when we conduct, it's called a Columbia Suicide Severity Scale. It's a crisis screening that we provide when students report that they're at risk of hurting themselves or someone else. Rutgers is licensed to, in lieu of sending a student out to Trinitas, if they meet certain criteria, Rutgers is able to provide that level of clearance to allow the student to remain in school. Of course, depending on the severity, and it's based on the rubric that's utilized, if a student is indicated or flagged, I should say, as high risk, then they are sent out for additional support, but Rutgers does provide that level of screening. And so at the end of the year, they do meet with myself and the supervisor of student services and report out how many students that they've serviced. So I'm happy to share that information with the board.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have a question, number thirty-two, on page forty-eight. Is this different from what we already approved, the Strauss Esme, and is this just for online access?
This is just for the online access of it. We currently have the, I mean, we have all the policies, this, and they're all a PDF online. We felt that we needed it, make it a little bit easier for searchable. You know, you can actually go into the individual policies. I could provide a sample website so that you could actually see how you can go through each of the policies. It's somewhat similar to, you know, it, it makes it a little bit easier search-wise, so that you can, you know, search policies, as well as it's broken down by the individual categories.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to the site update. And back to thirty-four, I just wanted to ask about the website development and migration. Is our current contract up with our website host?
Well, we don't actually have, you know, the, our website's been set up. We, you know, we have our webmasters who monitor it. The, the costs on actually the maintaining the site are minimal. I'd have to research it. This is basically for the development of the new website. And I could provide the proposal so that everyone can see it.
Please, I have a lot more questions, but I won't go back to that. Ms. Pino already answered, number thirty-six. And then for the addition that we'll be adding possibly with the feminine care products, will that be installed in each of the schools?
Which one was that?
The addition that you spoke to about the feminine care products being placed in the bathrooms at the schools. Will that be at all schools, just specific schools?
Oh, for the, the feminine?
Yes.
That would just be, it's just the middle That would just be, it's just the middle schools and the high school, because...
Everyone matures at different rates, so I think we should reassess that.
Okay.
And is it free?
Yes, they would be free. I mean, I know that, and again, I, I don't know, I mean, I know at the middle and high schools, the nurses do also usually have the feminine products, but we could certainly look at installing it at the, at the elementary's too.
Thank you. To be, and the dispensers in the bathroom?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it is. Moving on to Buildings, Grounds, and Security.
All right, on Thursday evening, the Building, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, will be presenting the following motions to the Linden Board of Ed. We just have three resolutions, all of these facilities. The first is for school nine. The majority are PTA events, although we do have a Scholastic Fall Book Fair at the gym in November. Resolution two is for the Linden Department Park and Rec to utilize the Soul and Linden High School gymnasiums for basketball programs for July and August. And finally, the Linden High School PTA is looking to do a movie night. They just need to get back to us, the original date and time they had given to us, I think, was a conflict, so they were looking to see if there was a different date and time that they could be utilizing it, and we hope to have that for you guys on Thursday night.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, at this time, we are going to go to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. At one of my meetings that I had with Ms. Perkins, I had brought up an idea of other types of testing to help students, and we're all here, public, the board, administrators, we're all here because we want what's best for the students. So I had brought up an idea, it goes back many years, when I took a test called the Strong Campbell Vocational Test. I know there's a version of it out there now, and I don't, I have no idea what it cost, but I think something like this might be beneficial to some of the students that are looking for a way to guide their natural abilities, or God-given abilities, to be better utilized to help them, and a better student with better training makes a better citizen of our great country. So therefore, I think that the board and the administration should look into other testing besides the state mandated testing that, I mean, I know you have to do the state mandated testing, that, you know, this is more about another test to better help the students, because that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Martin Cooper, Linden Education Association President and faculty member for Linden Board of Ed, and I'm here to say thank you for all you guys have done to support our students, and most is the New Jersey Stride Program. I'm so pleased to see this coming to our district. You know how hard it is to recruit good teachers, good staff, qualified educators, and most of all, ones with diverse backgrounds like our students. So again, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into executive session. I'd like to ask a motion for us to go into executive.
Motion, executive.
Roll call.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to dismiss, you may, this, we may have a long time of that.
You know, we may.
Have a good night, everyone. I'd like to call a motion to bring us back to public, respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham?
Yes. Oh, it's ladies' night.
I'd like to close this meeting and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham?
Meeting adjourned.